Okay, thank you, Ellie. All right. I'd like to call to order the meeting of October 20th, 2020, special meeting by the Board of Education. And I would like, we are going to share the American flag. Ellie, we're going to give you one second. And Karen, would you lead us in the pledge allegiance once the flag is there? And we're going to ask everybody to stand once we have that image on our screen. Ellie, I don't see the image yet.
Okay. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. We'd like to welcome the Village trustees and the consultants who will be presenting the comprehensive plan. And we appreciate finally getting this meeting together and having it on our schedule for this very important presentation to the community. I want to let the audience know that we will have the presentation and then the Board of Education will ask questions and comments. And we will allow for the audience also to have a public comment, to make public comments as well after, later in the program, later in the meeting. So I will pass the speaking to Karen, our village manager for Osning.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, everybody. We really appreciate this opportunity to, you know, this is really an opportunity to get your feedback on the comprehensive planning process. Schools are important, vitally important partner in our planning. And it's going to be an important chapter. And I know something that people have a lot of views and opinions. We want to be able to make sure as we look to create a vision for Osning that addresses our needs to support our diverse community, our housing needs, our economic development needs, our environmental needs, that we are doing it in such a way that we're creating an all boats rise scenario, not only for our community, but our school district as well. So thank you for being such a good partner to the village. We wish to make sure that this plan continues to strengthen and grow that partnership in a way that supports all residents of the village of Osning. With that, I will turn it over to, I guess, Simon to initiate the presentation. I do think we all know each other. We want to save a little bit of time on this phone call. We do have trustee Omar Lopez on the call today from the village board, as well as members of our staff. But I think that the people that you most likely need to be introduced to are comprehensive plan consultants. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Simon Kates.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you all for having us here. As Karen said, this is such an important meeting for us as well in order to hear what the school board's concerns are and also to present some of the data that we've been looking at. I'm going to share my screen in just a moment. And I'm going to go through just a very brief introduction about where we are in the process and a little bit about what a comprehensive plan is, just from a very high level. I'll try to get through that intro in a short amount of time so that we can get into the, really the meat of the discussion today. For that, I'll turn it to Tina Lund from Urbanomics. And Tina has been coordinating with the village and with the school district as well to pull some data and start thinking about what potential impacts on the school district might be. And as Karen said, it's very important to us when we're thinking about these sort of long-term village-wide issues to understand what type of balance we need to strike. There's a lot of different factors at play when you're looking at a comprehensive plan. And we want to know what your concerns are so that we can incorporate them into these larger issues and make sure that we're striking the right balance. And we're not, we're not through our best intentions, creating unintended consequences. So it's, as I said, a very important conversation to have. And we're looking forward to getting to a discussion with you. So I'm going to share my screen. And we'll get into it. Okay. So just very briefly, I wanted to put this up. This is our comprehensive plan steering committee. Melissa Banta, of course, you all know, is one of our co-chairs. And Pat Yost is on the call here today as well. But this is the rest of the group. It includes members of the village board of trustees, which is great coordination for us to have during the planning process. The trustees will be the body who ultimately is asked to adopt the comprehensive plan. So we've got them involved along the way. And we're glad that Omar is here for this call as well. But you can see the rest of the group in, on the comprehensive plan steering committee. And just very briefly, by way of introduction, we've got a great group of village staff that we've been meeting with really weekly since back in March, including Karen, the village manager, and Jaime Martinez, the planning director, and others. And you see on the right here, sort of our broader team as part of the consultant team, led by BFJ Planning, Frank Fish is on the call here today. But we've also been working closely with Urbanomics, who is the key for, where she's relating to the school district. Tina Lund and Peter First are both here, and you'll hear from them in a moment. But we've also been working with Keller Sessions, which is an engineering firm that's been working with the village for many years. And Dirk and Edson is an architecture and urban design firm that is helping, has been helping us out on some zoning issues as well. So we've got a very broad and comprehensive team here. I'm going to just spend a moment or two on some background here. What is a comprehensive plan? It's a long-range, almost a vision document for how the village sees its future progressing over time. Comprehensive plans are often thought of as something that you want to update every 10 years or so. It's quite rare that a municipality hits that 10-year target, although the village of Osning is pretty close. Their last plan was adopted back in 2009. It is not itself a regulation. It's a way to guide land use regulations, capital planning, or other policy goals that the village may have over time. But it's meant to be a guide for actions that the village takes. It's based on a public planning process. That's why we want to hear from, as Karen mentioned before, all of these different subcommittees that we've been meeting with, but as well as you all from the school board. And it's a balance between looking at hard data and hearing about community priorities. Try to factor in all of these different inputs. Again, we've been meeting with a range of different subcommittee groups related to economic development, related to the waterfront, cultural and historical organizations, and so on. These have been helping inform a lot of the key priorities that we've been talking about with the village internally over the course of the past several months. We've also been asking subcommittee groups to help us get the word out about the process. And where we are right now is we have some resources online. There are drafts of the bulk of the plan available online on the last link here. And so I would encourage all of you to take a look at what we have online. But also feel free to publicize this website. If you have stakeholders that you think should see what we're working on and may have something to say about it. We want to hear as much input as possible. So you can see the website here. You can see where we have documents posted. And we also have a steering committee public hearing tonight. I should have put this on the slide. Steering Committee Public Hearing Tonight at 7:30. And if you go to the upcoming events here on the slide, you can find information about that. It's a virtual meeting. It's Zoom. It's going to be an opportunity for the public to comment on the plan. It's not the last opportunity to comment. So if someone can't make it tonight, that's okay. But it is one point in time where people can weigh in on the plan. Just in terms of overall timeline, and I'm going to be very brief on this slide. But we have been meeting with the steering committee monthly. We're here in October, October 20th. They've been a great guide for us along the way. We've also met with the Board of Trustees several times. And we've got another meeting with them coming up on October 28th. We've had a series of public input opportunities along the way, predominantly online because of the age that we're in, of course. We have been working on chapters of a comprehensive plan. You see this here in turquoise in the middle of the slide. And even though we've got a near full draft of the plan done, it's not 100% done, but it's close. We're, you know, in the big scheme of things, we're really only about halfway through the project. We're close to having a full plan. Once the steering committee has an opportunity to review it, they'll be able to transmit it to the Board of Trustees. We are hoping we'll get comments from the trustees through the winter. We are hoping to have a public hearing on the trustees' draft of the plan in February, later in the winter. Of course, only the trustees can set that public hearing, but that's where we've got it penciled in. And once we have that public hearing, we'll work on final edits to the plan in the zoning based on public comment. But you can see that there's two other items here on the timeline in pink here. Part of our contract is to make zoning code updates. And so we have been working with the steering committee and trustees on those. We've got a meeting with the trustees on October 28th to talk about those in more detail. But critical to this discussion, I think, is what's down here in yellow, which is Compliance with the State Environmental Quality Review Act. This is where we are looking at potential adverse environmental impacts based on adoption of the plan and the zoning. And one of the impacts that we look at is impacts on public schools. And so we are early in this process. We've not written the draft generic environmental impact statement yet. But Tina and Peter from Urbanomics have started to look at what some of the inputs might be when we look at potential changes, especially to the zoning code, and how might we analyze whether there are significant adverse environmental impacts? The trustees have adopted a positive declaration, which means that there may be significant impacts. And so we're going to look at that. So from the standpoint of the school district and maybe wanting to know, you know, is adoption of the comprehensive plan and zoning going to have impacts here? We're analyzing that. We want to know the answer to that. And if there are going to be problems, we want to be aware of that and have a dialogue with you about that. So if there are questions about this, we can circle back to it. I just don't want to spend too long going on project schedule. I want to get into Tina and Peter's a bit on the data. Here, this is just an outline of the overall plan. As I mentioned, the bulk of it is already available online. These two chapters in orange will be available online soon. The piece on the public schools is in Chapter Seven, Sustainable Infrastructure. But that is already available online. So you all can take a look at it. Folks who are watching from home can take a look at that. And please let us know if you have comments on what we've put in there so far. But as I mentioned, we're very close to having a full draft online for everyone to review. And with that, I'm going to turn this to Tina Lund and Peter First from Urbanomics to talk about some of the specific data that we've been looking at that relates to population trends and potential impacts on the school district. So Tina and Peter, I'll turn it to you.
Thank you, Simon. So when we start looking at impacts, especially on schools, we start with what's happening in terms of population and demographics. So what you see on this slide is that an illustration of what's happening in terms of the components of change in Westchester County. So what it is, is net migration, not births, have supported historic population growth. So the county's birth rate has been declining, as you can see in the blue bars, as they decrease in size. But population has continued to grow as new households have moved to the county. So, Simon? And this isn't just a phenomenon for Westchester. This trend is being seen nationally, statewide. Similar trends, obviously, in New York State and Westchester County. And Osning, the Osning School District's resident births have been declining since 2007. And the state health department actually keeps track of births in the district, which is very helpful for us. So 2016 was the lowest number of births since 2002. Osning first, school district births are down 19.9% from a 20-year peak in 2003. And that peak was 542 births. And Westchester County resident births have been down 18.5% in 2017 since 2003. And obviously, this information has affected enrollment forecasts. The information we have here is the enrollment forecast that I believe Suffolk County boasts is prepared for the school district. So what you're seeing from their, or actually enrollment forecast, is the peak year of enrollment will be 2020. Sorry, where this is set up, I can't actually see the screen. Sorry about that. So 4,837 students is the forecasted peak in 2020. So between now and 2024, there's a forecasted loss of 138 students. And enrollment is expected to continue to decline through 2030 and 2031 by another 209 students. So this is lessening capacity at the schools as they stand. Okay, next slide, please. Then we want to look at development activity and the impacts that has on the school districts. 407 units have been recently completed between 2015 and 2020. There are another 393 units that have been approved but not completed, and another 505 units proposed but not yet approved. And most of these are multifamily units. And what we've discovered in looking at a variety of school-child generation rates is that relatively few schoolchildren reside in these new apartment buildings. New construction is built with smaller floor plans and smaller numbers of bedrooms, as a general rule. So what we're seeing is less public school child generation. But we did look at a range of sources, including a Rutgers study, which came up with a child generation rate, public school child generation rate, of 11 students per 100 units. We also did a cross-tabulation from the public use microdata from the census of new construction. And that came up with a generation rate of 10 students per 100 units. We also looked at the school enrollment data that we received from the district. And there were nine students in Harbor Square, from Harbor Square. Nine students per 100 units in Harbor Square. There's actually 17 children, but we're putting this on a similar scale. And then we looked at other comps in the area. The Avalon Willow in Merrinack and the Avalon Green in Elmsford each have seven students per 100 units. The Avalon in Bronzeville has six students per 100 units. And one city place in White Plains is 2.9, whereas Bank Street Commons has 2.6 students per household. And what we are also. And then we ran these school-child and potential total population generation rates through a fiscal model. And what we saw is that in a hypothetical 100-unit multifamily development in the downtown, there would be between 690,000 and $830,000 in net tax benefits for this hypothetical 100 units. The school district, regardless of number of children, and you can see on the lower access, we have the incremental cost from 11 schoolchildren down to three. Anywhere within that range of number of children, the school district would receive between $440,000 per year, all the way up to $577,000 per year. And in the meantime, the village itself will receive just about $250,000 in net tax benefits. And this is with the tax rates that we, the brand-new tax rates that we just received last Friday. So these are updated to the most recent information we have. So what we're seeing is in terms of look at revenues versus cost per school child, in this situation, the district would definitely come out a net winner in terms of revenues. Okay, Simon? And that's it.
That's sort of the data that we ran through on the school, some school impact side. What we're trying to get a sense of is if we recommend zoning that has a potential to increase multifamily development, we want to make sure that that doesn't have negative impacts on the school district, right? And so that's why we've done this sort of analysis. And I'll jump back one slide. And the village asked us to go through this exercise of what about a hypothetical building? What could, you know, what could those outcomes be? And so that's why we went down this path to get a sense of what those tax, what those tax revenues might be before the village and the school district. But that's sort of a high-level view of what we've gone through in the Sustainable Infrastructure Chapter related to the schools. As I said, that draft is online. It's available for people to review and comment on. But here, really, what we want to do, and I'll stop sharing here so we can see each other's faces a little bit more. And if anyone wants to go back to a slide, I can share my screen again, and we can jump back. But while we're having a discussion, I'll leave the screen off. But we really want to get your feedback. Is there anything that we're missing? Are there any other considerations that we need to be aware of? So that, so that we are, as I mentioned before, we're appropriately accounting for the right balance that we need to hear in a company.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Will you be presenting anything else today, any other slides?
No. Lisa, this is really to get input. And again, the structure of this meeting is typically a little bit less formal than a board meeting would be. But it's really to seek input from stakeholders about what they would like to see. We're creating a vision for Osning. So not only is it important that we address the needs of the schools, but we have other issues that we need to address as well. And we want to make sure that as we structure this vision, that we're including the input from as many people in the community as possible. So really, it's an opportunity to ask questions, give opinions, and seek ways that we can address issues that we have that sometimes also conflict, whether it's need for housing, affordability, impact on the school district, really just come to a resolution that, again, creates as much of an all boats rise scenario as possible.
Understood. Happy to open it up to my colleagues on the school board for some questions or comments. Trustee Galiff?
Can you go back to that last chart?
Yeah, just one moment.
Okay, so this is saying that if you build, I'll tell you what I think it's saying, you can correct me. If you build 100 units, you think you're going to have revenue? Well, I need help on this slide.
So the pieces you don't see is we looked at both the school tax revenues that would come from the likely assessed value of a, you know, standard 100-unit multifamily building. And then we looked at the cost per school child. And that's something that of about $17,000 and change. And that's something we developed with the school district, the cost to educate. And then the multiplying out the number of schoolchildren and the net costs that was then subtracted from the total tax revenues. And what you see in that magenta area or brick area is the net balance of that equation. So the revenues outweigh the cost to educate of, you know, any of those numbers of children by more than $400,000 each year.
Yeah, I would like to add just a quick note, Tina. This is a market rate development that was analyzed here. There's, I don't want to get too into it, but so if you take 17,000 per kid, you've got 11 kids there on the far left. That's 187,000. You know, it gets, I just, I mean, we've been looking at the same question for 10 years, you know, on the school board and community conversations. And just that, I think our issue historically has been that, and this might be changing, but that it's not just, the concern isn't the 17,000 a year. But I think the 17,000 is an oversimplified number. I know it's an average, and it's the best you can kind of come up with. But some kids, you know, we have classes, you can add a kid, and there's almost zero cost. And then there's, sometimes you hit the threshold, you need to add a new classroom. And that comes with a whole teacher. And so that kid takes you over a number that is more expensive and averages. But historically, as our enrollment has gone up, what it doesn't factor in is the facility cost that sometimes you're, you know, 10, 50, 100 kids. Now you can't fit in a building. And now you need to build, you know, four new classrooms, 10 new classes, whatever. And that cost is definitely not included in your 17,000 a year per kid. The question is, you know, how do you manage your enrollment enough so that you don't need to add new facilities? In which case, your 17 a year is probably an okay number. Or if you're going to build enough that you do need to add to facilities, then you can't use the 17,000 number anymore. You need to figure out what number to use that would account for, you know, X millions of dollars of, I mean, we know it's like a million dollars per classroom to build a classroom is a good rough number. So the question is, how do you factor that in? When you're talking about more than, you know, three to 11 kids on, as you have on your chart?
I think, and Tina, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's why we sort of started with the view of the enrollment projections and seeing that the enrollment projections are going down. It makes these numbers a little bit easier to look at. Because if projections are going down, then maybe we're not running up against a situation where, you know, five or 10 or 15 new schoolchildren are going to, you know, push you to a position where you need a new building. Now, if that's not the case, right, if you're already there now, that's helpful information for us to know and to talk about here. But, you know, that's why we're looking at these numbers in the context of those enrollment projections.
Yeah, you know, I would add, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just saying, Simon, you're correct. That's the reason why we looked at the, the district's own enrollment forecast because right now, I mean, with a decline of 138 students over the next, I think just five years. It was, I mean, we could have 10 of this hypothetical building. But of course, yeah, we always want to know what the implications are from building to building.
Have you, Greg, I'm not going to take your spot, but I just wanted to ask a question. Have you accounted for the movement of residents from New York City and so forth during this last six months? Do these numbers reflect that?
No, no, there aren't any actual data at this point on population moves. I mean, if this school district has more recent numbers, you know, if what's happened in the last six months, that would be terrific. But right now we have to go with the most recent data available.
You know, I want to just kind of mention this as well. So obviously this is a comprehensive plan. We're talking today about impacts on the school district from, you know, potential zoning changes that might lead to more market rate development and some more children as well as more revenue that will help with that. But the comprehensive plan obviously is looking at a lot of different factors, right? So we have to consider the concerns that people have about environmentalism and preserving, you know, open space, preserving, you know, opportunities to go and spend time with their family along the waterfront. They want to have, you know, a more pleasant experience when hanging out in the downtown or, or, you know, if they're walking up along Crotton Avenue. You know, there are a lot of different factors, obviously, that fed into this, you know, from transportation needs to, you know, just the general desires. But there's also kind of the reality of the changing marketplace of alternative uses that, that we're not talking about today, right? So the, the question that has certainly come up has said, well, why don't we do, you know, more retail? Right? But one of the challenges of going and saying, hey, let's just put in a bunch of new retail is confronting the reality that retail in general across the country, you know, specifically here in Austin, it's just not a growth market, right? It's, it's, it's falling as things have changed. COVID has affected the ability for us to, you know, properly forecast whether office spaces is going to grow or not. But we do know that there's a long history in Manhattan and Westchester County where, you know, the office space as a use has sort of dissipated. There's, you know, the challenges of trying to expand industrial uses, right? In a village where there aren't a lot of spaces to do that, and they're not necessarily in the most ideal, you know, opportunities. So for, for the comprehensive plan, we're trying to come up, I think, collectively with a strategy that helps sort of push the village forward. And what we're looking for, I think particularly in this meeting is input that will help us, you know, make that vision move forward. But I think it's also important to keep in mind that the solutions that you make here, sometimes, well, we just need no housing and we need more businesses are not really viable all the time. And so we're sort of forced to combat that reality and try to come up with solutions that are certainly consistent with the, the expectations that we have in the market today.
Trustee Galif, do you have some more questions?
Yeah. Well, again, I mean, a couple of broad things, and again, obviously just my opinion. I mean, such a couple of things, in the enrollment forecast, I mean, we've been living with that thing for 10 plus years as well. I think, you know, as a board, the last couple of conversations, we're, you know, we're starting to see that reality is not, it's not increasing as it was. I don't know if we all believe 100% that that forecast is, is accurate yet. And it just, it's just the reality, you know, it went up 1,000 kids over eight years. And so, you know, you start to see, I know the last three or four years, it's pretty much been flat. So I think, you know, the reality is sinking in that it's, could decline. I don't know that the community has been in as involved in that conversation. So you're certainly going to get people in the community who are not anywhere near believing that that is going to happen. And, you know, so there's at least some communication there. I know, I think in a month we have our, you know, an update on that, on the school board. But, you know, so the enrollment, I see how you're looking at it, but it's, until it happens, it's not.
Just to clarify, I thought this was a 2019 forecast. And if that's incorrect, then we need to go back and revisit the numbers.
No, that, I mean, that may, you know, that, that we get it, we get it updated every year.
Okay.
So that must be last year's. And then I think in, I think one of our November meetings, usually in November, every November we get a new forecast. Then they're looking at this birth rates and all the same things, sure, looking at it. I don't know that it will change dramatically. And like you say, you see the, you know, you see kind of the four years on your chart there that have been pretty level. But I'm just saying, you know, when you hear community conversation, you're going to hear disbelief that the numbers could go down and that there's any more room. I think until we live that 100 student drop, it's, it's hard to believe. That's one, I think, another. I mean, unfortunately, the district and the village don't line up with the same borders. So, you know, last week we were on a call with Briar Cliff and they have some big properties that they're trying to keep commercial, but there's no guarantee they're commercial. And if they don't stay commercial and they went residential, you know, they could fill that 100, 200 kids slot easily. And so there's, there's always been that question of how do we get the Village of Austin, Town of Austin and Village of Briar Cliff in the same room? So that they're all looking at the school district's information together and the village isn't claiming 100 spots. And Briar Cliff is claiming 100 spots and saying, you know, you have room. And we do, if the other person doesn't do, you know, we're on the same page. But I think there's some out of the schools that, you know, when you get to that tax chart, there's the broader, some developments are more school friendly in terms of more tax revenue, less kids. And some developments are not as much revenue, more kids, but good for the community. And if you could again blend across the whole school district, Briar Cliff, Austin, you, you might, you know, better the whole. But Briar Cliff and Austin are two different municipalities for this discussion, unfortunately, down in the comprehensive plan level. But that's still, but we're the one, you know, we're the ones that tie it together. And like I said, we're just on a meeting last week where it's the, you know, trying not to have kids, but if we have kids, it's only X numbers here and X number there. And then this call, so just figuring out how to manage those two together. There is just a tiny point, I mean, there's the Avalon in Austin, you didn't have on your chart. I know, I don't think there's tons of kids, but just as a, another data point, there's an Avalon in Austin that might be a good data point as well. I think that's it for now.
This is Frank Fish. I might put a little perspective for trustee Galif on, on two questions you raised. You know, one is the overall, what's happening overall in the other school districts? You're not alone in having a projection of declining, you know, declining school. Almost every district in Westchester that we're working in has projected declines. And in the Mid Hudson, the whole of the Mid Hudson, actually, except for one district in Orange County, have similar decline enrollment projections. We just finished the comprehensive plan in Bronxville. Their district has, you know, a declining projection, which I was a bit surprised at. And the same in Scarsdale. So this is not something that you're isolated on or something that's new. This is happening due to just declining birth rates for a number of reasons all through Westchester County. You've, you've been something actually of an exception to that, you know, in the last 10 years because of immigration, but actually the birth rates are declining throughout Westchester. So the, the broader picture is there's, and I'm sure you talked to other, you know, other superintendents, other districts. This is happening throughout, throughout the Mid Hudson. The second thing I might mention is Briar Cliff, we, Buckers BFJ Planning, we're the planners for Briar Cliff. So we have talked to them and we've seen the proposals in those districts that you were, you were concerned with. But Briar Cliff now, as you know, is moving on their B, their so-called B or business zone to make sure that it remains commercial or office. Their priority in Briar Cliff right now is to keep those districts, the B districts, a commercial district rather than residential. There had been, just so you know, residential proposal for the old Phillips property in Briar Cliff Manor. And that was a proposal I met with a developer on behalf of Briar Cliff. And his proposal for that site, which by the way is now, would not be allowed under their new commercial zoning that they're, they're looking at. But his past residential, that would have been the largest residential proposal in Briar Cliff on the Phillips property. But that was sort of an age restricted lifestyle development, if you will, you had to be 55 or older. It would have generated probably, you know, there could have been an exception. That might have been one or two public schoolchildren. But in general, that type of development would have generated really no one for the Austin School District. So it would have been total plus for you in terms of dollars, in terms of fiscal impact and with really no public schoolchildren. So we've looked at other parts of the district that, you know, are outside of the village, of course, the town. But Briar Cliff and also a small part, as you, you know, of Newcastle and a small part of Yorktown. The planners in, in all of those areas did not indicate to us any major developments that they had online right now that were proposals. And Briar Cliff now, except for the Phillips site, and that has somewhat receded because Briar Cliff has indicated to the developer there, they're really interested more in office or commercial. There are no major proposals that we're aware of. So I, I, I think the, the, the decline in enrollment combined with a lack of development in the other municipalities or lack of proposals does, does, does present for the future, the near term future. I mean, birth rates, as you know, the best projections are out there five years because the low birth rate of 2020, we, we pretty much know without some externality happening that in five years, that's going to affect your, your district. So we know those rates for the next five years, which are fairly accurate. That's what your, your study says too. You know, the Western Suffolk Bosie study. So I think the greater picture is one of, at least in the near term future, some decline in enrollment following the, you know, following the greater declines in birth rates throughout, throughout Westchester. And then in your other municipalities that, where we've talked to all the planners, they're not indicating to us any change in, in any real developments that are, that are proposed of, of any great. You know, there might be some single family homes, one or two single family homes here or there, but they're not projecting any new major developments. The only one I'm aware of is in Briar Cliff, and that one actually would have produced probably no public schoolchildren for, for the school district. So that, that's a bigger sort of just context to your two, two concerns you expressed.
Trustee Galif, do you have anything else before we move on?
No, you can move on.
Okay, great. Trustee Crossley.
All right. Thanks, Lisa. Thank you, everyone, for the presentation. I, I do have some follow-up questions or thoughts. And, you know, I think sometimes school board members are presumed to be anti-development. So I think, you know, if you're asking me my personal opinion, not on behalf of the school board, I am not an, an anti-development board trustee. As long as it's smart and thoughtful and we're having a really engaged, robust conversation about it. And I think, I think that's sort of why we're all here. You know, but I do, I have some questions. I know we were looking at development and some of the developments that were cited as not putting a lot, comparatively putting, you know, too many students into the school just district, potentially our Harbor Square and Avalon. But these are luxury developments. Rent there starts at, you know, a minimum around $3,000 a month. And I'm unclear to me if these slides in this presentation, are we considering only luxury development? Are we considering affordable housing? So if you could provide more context and color around that. And then, you know, along the same lines, do we have similar values for housing developments that did not initially start as luxury, full service developments? And how many students do those types of developments typically put into the school district per 100 units? And then I think there was something that someone mentioned, which is, you know, Austin has sort of been an anomaly over the years because of immigration. We've been an exception to some of the trends that have been seen in places like Scarsdale and other communities and Bronxville and other communities in Westchester. So have we made any efforts to really look at that and how that potentially, because that, that's a curve ball in all of these enrollment projections. You know, the, the enrollment projections that, that are done are not necessarily done with sort of micro focus on what's going on here in Austin. So I just want to make sure that that's taken into account. And then in terms of, you know, the 55 plus category. So I've seen that thrown around a few times. And then when you look closer, it's always been, well, 55 preferred. And if we can't fill it with the 55 preferred, we open it up to other residents. You know, I think we're still in like the, the broad concepts here, but you know, it's, there has to, it has to be really careful when we are looking at, at that type of development. Anything that's simply 55 preferred is, you know, in my opinion, is not likely to stay in, in the 55 plus category for very long. So can you just speak and provide a little bit of context to some of the, the background and the thought process to any of these issues that I've raised?
You know, if I can try to jump in here real quick, then kind of hand it over. But, you know, first, the, the question about the market versus luxury. I, you know, the, I think that, you know, what, what is typically being built right now are market rate buildings. And so I think that the view of Harbor Square is sort of a luxury building is, you know, kind of accurate in the sort of the finishes and details that you see in there. But the rents that they're getting, the, the market rents that they're getting there are based off of sort of the, the kind of general rents that you're seeing in that community. Now, the market rent and, you know, waterfront property in Austin is going to be sort of like, you know, one level. And the market rent that you're going to see in downtown Bronxville is, is going to be a higher number, right? So the, those two both might be classified as luxury buildings, but those market rents are different. And so the estimates that Urbanomics made are based off of what are reasonable market rents for a new market rate project in, correct? Tina?
Yeah, that is correct.
Yeah. So the, the other, the other thing I wanted, I wanted to clarify a little bit was that there was a comment that was made by Frank Fish about immigration. The, I think that that might not be the correct term. So when we're talking about people who have moved into the village as opposed to people who have immigrated, you know, from another country into the village. So that's kind of a, a different broader topic. And I don't believe that, Frank, that's necessarily what you meant, correct? You're talking about people who have sort of migrated to the community.
That's correct.
That's actually what I meant is. That's actually what I meant as well. There, there has been a densification within the village. And I think that is somewhat unique to Austin. So I'm, that's what I was asking you to speak on.
When, when the forecasts are done, and it's a, a pretty standard modeling, regardless of who's doing it. Birth rates are definitely taken into account. But really what it is, is retention rates as children age through the, the district from year to year. So, you know, in 2003, there were X number of children in kindergarten. And then the, the, the number of children that are, you know, in the first grade the next year establish that rate. And it's combinations of that rate going forward is how things are modeling. And that actually takes into account in migration. Because it is possible, and I've seen it in other districts where there's a, say, a parochial elementary school, that's very, very popular. But it only goes through the fifth grade. So what you see in the sixth grade is a retention rate of greater than 100%. So that it does seem to be when you look at it on a year to year basis, it does capture immigration relatively well, in migration relatively well.
Your other question was about the 55 plus communities. And Frank, I know you're like an expert on this, so maybe you can kind of handle that.
Yeah, I, just to mention, the one in Briar Cliff Manor is, as I mentioned, no longer on the board. The new proposed zoning would not allow it on the Phillips property. So it's, it's not a current issue. However, on your 55 and older community, it depends on how it's structured, both in the zoning and in the deed restrictions. The deed restrictions being a contract. So we found that those have lasted quite a long time in, in other communities. It's not to say that zoning can't be changed. But deed restrictions or contracts are harder to change over time. So we have found a lot of these age restricted communities to survive quite well. And particularly now, the demographics, as you probably know, the baby boom is retiring. Actually started to retire maybe five or six years ago. And there's even more demand for these communities. So in the near term future, again, I, I'm not saying beyond the next, say, 10 years. The baby boom, as you know, was, you know, started in 1946 and peaked, I think, in the late 50s and lasted through 1964 or so. So they're retiring and that's a, a very big demographic bulge. One of the largest in American, you know, contemporary history. So there's a demand for senior housing, which is why you're seeing interest in it. And I would think that that will continue. But the planners in the different communities we touched base with, as I mentioned, did not indicate to us any proposals. The only one I know of was again in Briar Cliff. But that would not be allowed under the current or the proposed zoning in Briar Cliff. So I think, you know, that's, that's the, the, the issue with them there. There is heavy demand for senior housing though. And it's, it's projected by the Urban Land Institute and others to last another, you know, another decade.
So can I, I just want some follow up clarification questions? Because it's, I guess it's a little bit unclear. Is this portion of the prison chase and just basically to say, you know, if we were babes, basically if we're able to add 100 new units, you know, the financial benefit to the school district is, is, is okay? Or are we talking market rate units? Are we, you know, is there an actual strategic decision as to, to what the village is, is looking to do or have as acceptable? You know, are, are we talking market rate? Is there, you know, help me understand what the proposal is sort of going forward?
I think that's a really good question and that kind of gets back to my earlier point. So we, we are talking a lot about market rate housing here. But I think that it's important to note that, you know, what are some of the things that are lacking in the community or, or that are sort of underdeveloped in the community that you'd like to see better? And, you know, some of that is like, you know, how is the downtown accessible? Do we need more, you know, public space for students to go and access the internet? Do we, you know, have any issues that we need to build into the comprehensive? So, you know, one of the sort of pillars of, of, you know, raising tax revenue and helping to come up with a strategy to bring down the tax rate is focusing on, you know, redevelopment opportunities that are going to generate more revenue than they are going to consume in terms of property. So that's why we're kind of having this conversation about the market rate development. But the, the bigger question really is, is not the bigger question, but the other question is really trying to figure out, you know, what are other things that are needed in the community that should go into the comprehensive plan that help us form our thought and our strategy around the development of this comprehensive plan, right? We, we, we know a lot from a lot of the other subcommittees, but we really do want to hear from the trustees, not just a sort of, you know, a critical analysis of this piece of information that was given to you today, but a broader understanding of, of what you think is needed in the community.
So I think I personally would like to see, because I know there are some proposals on that, being considered for, you know, I don't know the official term of it's workforce housing. I'd like to see an analysis of the impact of that type of housing on the school district, not just market rate, but sort of a more niche type of, of housing. Is that possible?
Actually, Catherine, I'm sorry. That will be specific to the proposal that's now being considered at the Water Street site, which you may have heard about, which would be all affordable. You know, affordable workforce, there's pretty technical terms. But generally speaking, when we're talking about affordable housing, we're talking about people who are working and, and just don't make enough to live in Westchester. And that's probably, you know, and, and not be cost burdened by their rent or housing costs. And that is over 50% of the population. So that is a consideration. So for that project, we will be, we're actually in the process of doing that analysis now specific. But more generally speaking, I think Frank can talk to this and our colleagues from BFJ is that this is, this is a crux of, of, of an issue that we have here in Austin that to a certain degree, a large degree, the comp plan is looking to address. And we know that we have issues of, you know, overcrowding in the school district. We also know that we have a huge need as for levels of affordability and different types of housing, particularly for families that tend to have children. And, and we know that those in a sense are competing needs. So we want to be very thoughtful, to your point, about the way we look at it. The village board has made a commitment to addressing issues of affordability that was really sort of established in, in the, with the work that Kevin Dorka did in, in 2017 on the housing needs assessment. And that's a, a bit of a building block that we're using to inform the comprehensive plan now. But again, these are things that we know there's not necessarily an easy solution because what's a solution on one end can, can be problematic on another end. So you will see more of that analysis specific to the Water Sheet project. But more broadly speaking, maybe Frank or Simon, you want to address that question?
Well, I could mention that, for instance, a development like Harbor Square, as you all probably know, already does have some, it has a 10% or so affordable housing in it now. So the public school numbers that we used from Harbor Square, they obviously include those units. And I think new development, it's safe to say, well, it's reasonable to say, I think, most probably infill development in the downtown, and we're looking at that now, could very probably be that model. Or a number of those would be if they were to come in. They'll be market rate, they'll be developer generated. But they would have, many of them would have affordable housing. And the, the normal component in Westchester County is about 10% of the units. And normally, as you know, the county suggests 80% that those units be between 60 and 80% of median income. That median income in Westchester County is around $100,000 in rough numbers. So that gives you an indication of, of the income that people could make in those units. That's income for a family of four. So the income for workforce housing or affordable housing is not the same as, it's not your, your public housing level. It's a little bit higher. The, the other one would be a tax credit, real estate deal in which the developers looking for federal tax credits. Those usually are 20% of the units would be affordable, the rest market rate. And those would be at 50% of median income. So you're, you're talking about trying to provide housing, a portion of the housing in developments coming in that, that could serve, you know, some of the employees of the district, starting off, people working in businesses in, in the downtown. But generally what we're seeing, and we see this throughout Westchester, is just because of the paucity of, I, I've spent part of my career on the Board of the Housing Action Council with Rose Noonan. And while they develop all affordable housing, most of the new housing in Westchester that's affordable is in a mixed use development, which is a market rate proposal by the developer with 10% of the units affordable. And those, those units, for instance, in Harbor Square are already incorporated. Public school children from those units are already incorporated. The one that Karen just mentioned though is all affordable, which is, that, we'll see what that generates. Our experience from places like Mount Vernon, which I mean, knows very well, is that an all affordable unit, units will generate slightly more public school children per unit. But again, if it's multi, if it's new multifamily infill housing and they're mostly studios, ones and twos, in terms of bedroom distribution, that's not, it doesn't matter who's living there. They're normally, if it's new housing and it's mixed income, they're normally going to be attracting people who are single or people who are, don't have families yet, and they may intend to have a family. It's just because of the nature of the unit. As opposed to a single family home, which generates families and, and therefore generates a, a few more public school children per unit.
So my last comment, I apologize for taking up so much time, but I think it would be helpful, just for context purposes, to know, you know, if there is a desire to have, you know, a certain percentage of new housing over the next 10 years be affordable and the village has made a determination of what that would be. You know, it would be helpful to have that information as part of the overall analysis.
Earlier, we're, we're going to try to make some, we're going to try to do some analysis in the environmental impact statement. We just wanted to lay out for you now the, the sort of database or factual picture that we have gained in Westchester County and through Tina's work with your own school district, which is indicating that enrollments are projected to drop. Your, your own consultants project that. And also that the housing type is the thing that matters. What we're looking at in terms of zoning changes in Austin, we're not looking at changes in the comprehensive plan in the single family districts. In, in large part, we're looking at downtown, the two family, the T, so-called T zone. Those would be mostly multifamily developments. And it's the multifamily development, that's why the village asked Tina to look at that. The multifamily development generally pays its way. It produces relatively few school children, perhaps one child for every 10 units. That's a ratio we see a lot. And it pays its way and, and you would need hundreds of those units before you're going to affect that decline, that projected decline in your school enrollment. So we'll, we'll see, we've got to do more work because we want to see what the trustees think about. We're going to have a discussion with the trustees later this month, as Simon mentioned. And then we'll get a better feel for the type of zoning the trustees are going to look at. But so far, what we're focusing is on downtown, on new, you know, multifamily housing.
Frank, I just want to add to, and Catherine, to your point. So the village years ago had established 10% housing set aside for affordability. So certain, now any new development over six units has to commit to 10% of their units or one unit, in the case of a six unit building, being set aside as affordable at 80% area median income, which is still a fairly high. I wouldn't say it was very affordable. It's, it's considered sort of moderately affordable. That's baked into the analysis that Tina has done. So in that regard, the, the village's plans for affordable housing are addressed that way. If we're looking at, in some cases, you may have, you know, some as of right development that's done by nonprofits like IFCA or, or others. In the case of DPW, that's through a tax credit program that has certain requirements on affordability and unit size. But broad strokes, in terms of looking at a real impact of affordable housing, right now, the, the set aside is captured in the data that, that has been, we've put together so far. And Tina, if I said anything incorrect, just correct me.
No, that is correct. Well stated. Thanks, Karen.
Okay. Just want to move, move to anyone who has questions before we go to the audience. I see we have one audience member that has a question. Want to, trustee Spring?
Yes, I have one quick question. Sorry, I jumped on late. I appreciate you guys taking the time for this meeting. So during the coronavirus pandemic, we have seen somewhat of a shift from luxury apartments to people buying single family homes. Can you just like run through the evidence that exists out there that there is a demand or a need for high density housing? Given that the single family housing market has really skyrocketed, but the high density rentals has kind of taken a nosedive since the pandemic hit?
You know, I'm going to try to answer this a little bit.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Let me jump in a little bit here. So I, I want to provide a little context for the village of Austin. You know, if you have an occupied house and that house changes hands, which is what you have seen some of that taking place in Westchester County. One of the things that does is leads to higher property values. All right, so the, the house that was purchased for, you know, 200,000 is now worth 300,000. And you're seeing that throughout Westchester County. But there are some communities, you know, places farther, sort of towards the northeast corner that have a lot of developable land, right? So you could go and build housing, large housing units, you know, big floor plans, 2,000 square feet, 3,000 square feet. But in the village of Austin, I can't speak for other parts of the school district. But in the village of Austin, there is just not a lot of land that's left that be developed into new housing. But one of the things that we did want to, you know, analyze in here, which we didn't, it's not in this presentation, was sort of the, the difference between higher density, smaller floor plate apartment units versus putting in townhomes or versus putting in, you know, large, single family homes. And those produce more school children than apartments. And part of the reason, I think, is kind of common sense, right? If you have the ability to spend 24, 2500, 2800 on a two bedroom apartment, you could probably also get a house which is much bigger and has a backyard. And so that's, I think, you know, part of why those higher density apartments at, you know, market rates are, are leading to less school children. But Tina, do you want to sort of fill in some of that?
I think that's probably a pretty good wrap up, especially for Austin. I can, I've been looking at it more on a macro scale. And there have been a significant number of relocations as people are looking for more space, especially if they're going to be locked down for much longer. But we're also starting to see relocations from apartments to apartments just in different areas, like leaving the city and going to places like Austin and New Rochelle and Portchester, where it's a little smaller scale and it's not quite so dense. So we are seeing a little bit of that. And I, I don't know what the long term effects are going to be. As a, we tend to be kind of reactionary in terms of real estate decisions. As we tend to be kind of reactionary in terms of real estate decisions. But I think we just need more time to see what's going to happen.
And another follow-up. So the single family houses, you said, would add more schoolchildren, and that would add a greater cost to the school district. But how have like other costs been analyzed with high density housing, such as the use of municipal services, police and fire, more cars on the road, how that impacts, you know, quality of life issues like the commute to the train station, creating more traffic in the morning and the afternoon? How how have those costs been analyzed? If they've already been answered with the presentation, you don't have to answer. I'll watch it later on. Again, I apologize for coming all late. But I just, I want to kind of delve into how, you know, the use of services and the impact of cars on the road and impact on our infrastructure are also taken into account here.
Yeah, I can speak quickly to the municipal services, much the same way we looked at the the net cost benefit for schoolchildren. We looked at in terms of per capita costs of new residents as a whole, on things like police, fire, culture and recreation, public service, all of that.
Yeah, I I think that also, you know, we didn't mention it here, but it is really important to understand that when we're talking about consideration for multifamily housing, we're talking about consideration in areas that already have it, right? In our areas that already zone for it, there are no changes in the comprehensive plan as of this point that would, you know, say, you take a single family district and tear it down and put up brand-new multifamily house. All right, so you you're allowed to do as-of-right by the waterfront multifamily housing. You're allowed in the VC district, you're allowed to do it in some of these other areas. And so what we're talking about is kind of analyzing the impacts of some changes to the policy that would maybe increase the density sleep, but would also make the area more walkable. And there's other factors to that. But we are not, this comprehensive plan is not saying that we should sort of take a single family district or two-family district and convert it into a high-density, you know, area that's going to affect traffic or anything else. So I want to be real clear on that. There is already a lot of underlying zoning in the village that if people came in as-of-right, that they could build this type of housing. So we're not projecting to change any of that. So it's not really, you know, a zero-sum game. It's talking about understanding that the zoning that we have now can lead to certain types of development and, you know, making sure that as the development does take place, that it's the kind of development that we want to see, that it's going to work visually when we're talking about form-based zone, but also that it's just going to, you know, be productive for the village, right? It is important to understand, you know, the overall impact of any kind of development that's going to come forward for the village. And so it's not, you know, certainly not to take a shot at single family homes. You know, we have, you know, an immense amount of beautiful historic homes, and that has been a big piece of, you know, things that we need to figure out for this comprehensive plan, right? We have taken some consideration to how do we preserve and adaptively reuse some of the existing historic properties that have kind of, you know, come into different states of disrepair because the uses that they used to have, like some of these old big churches, are really not being used in that way anymore. So that that's another piece of it. So it's a good question. I think it's an important question. But but I do want to clarify, we're not talking about rezoning single-family neighborhoods and turning them into multifamily districts. That's not part of the.
One other thing I'd like to add, trustee spring, Tina, Tina talked about the municipal impacts that that she's included in in the estimates that she's she's done, police and fire and so on. At the at the beginning of the presentation, I went through a sort of a high-level timeline and talked about how we're sort of at the outset of doing an environmental impact statement, which will include looking at the impacts on the school district. That's the one, the one bit that I that I focused on there. But one of the other key impacts that we are going to look at is also traffic, which is the other, the other thing that you mentioned. And so that's, I just wanted to highlight that. That's one of the things that we're going to be looking at as well.
Thank you.
Okay, trustee Schnicker.
So thank you for the presentation. You answered one of my questions, but I did want to point it out in the online documentation. In, I guess, the chapter seven, you on page thirty, you have a chart that basically shows the net benefits. And I think the online version is incorrect. It was showing a greater net fiscal benefit to the, I guess, village and town and county versus the school district. And I, that didn't make sense to me, but in your presentation now, I think you've adjusted those numbers, but.
Yeah, we actually corrected for an error in the.
Okay. So it'd be great to get the online, get the online version updated.
Yeah, we're working on that. Peter is frantically typing now.
Okay, okay. A question about, I guess it was just brought up about adding multifamily housing to other, you know, zones, I guess, current zones. Just to question, it appeared that some of the ideas that were being considered for the two-family districts weren't adding multifamily homes there. And so I just, you know, it was, I guess I'd want clarification on that and understanding. I mean, part of in looking at some of the zoning changes proposed for the two-family districts included, you know, things like parking on front lawns and adding multifamily housing. The density concerns around that just seemed counter to what we've experienced. So you know, maybe you could clarify the points about the two-family zones.
So one of one of the things I'd like to bring up, and then Jaime, I'll let you go into the details. So this is like a pretty significant issue, and actually it is somewhat counterintuitive. We have a tremendous number of pre-existing non-conforming structures in the village of Austin and in the T-zone, in the two-family zone. In some cases, you can have structures that are as big as seventeen units in a T-zone. More often than not, it's it's smaller units that could be anywhere from three to ten units. And these are in the T-zone, and it's actually probably the more serious consideration for substandard housing and density because of the challenges that these homes have because they are in, they are pre-existing non-conforming. It's very, very, very difficult to have people come in, buy them as an eight unit, and then turn them back into a single family. And then also, even though it's a two-family zone, have to get a variance to make it a two-family zone. It never works and no one ever does that. So part of the issue and part of the issues that we have with overcrowded housing and substandard housing in Austining is due to the fact that our T-zone is not, you know, we just have a disproportionate number, up to sixty percent in some areas of pre-existing non-conforming homes. And where that creates, while it's counterintuitive to create more density, it actually is the better way to ensure that properties are sold and rehabilitated in a way that's responsible and they're not subject to slum lords. Because right now, many of those houses, slum lords, you know, are really the only ones willing to buy them because they don't have to really put in many amenities to make them worth the the investment that they would need to have to bring them up to code and such. So it is counterintuitive, and I'll let Jaime and our consultants talk a little bit about our thinking, but it does contribute to rightsizing our our area and making sure that we are offering more quality housing in these areas.
Yeah, so a significant portion of the village was built prior to the existence of any zoning code, right? And the the districts that are most affected by this are the S-50 district, the S-75 district, and the D district. T-district is one of our most difficult districts. And so the T-district is, by definition, it's a two-family district that currently allows one-family homes, and then you have to get a sort of a conditional permit. You have to go and get approval to convert it to a two-family district. But functionally, that district is already kind of a two-family district. And there are licenses where people have taken their basement, they've taken their garage, various different things, and converted into an illegal three-family apartment. Now, you know, one of the issues is if you're a property owner and you live there, say, you, you know, you you're living there, you occupy space, in order to cover your mortgage, you need to rent it out, right? And so there are ways to do that in such a way that are, you know, building code compliant, right, are sort of consistent with the intention of the building originally and can meet the parking needs, are not going to have an impact. Then that might make sense for that individual property go through that. And so the code changes for the T-district say that, you know, let's get rid of the requirement that you have to go in front of the planning board to convert it to a two-family, considering it's already supposed to be a proper two-family district, which will allow an investor who's coming in, somebody who wants to buy that house, live there, or maybe just buy the house and rent it and know that they can pay a purchase price, and they're not going to have to go through a million hoops to to, you know, to convert it to be a two-family legally. And they they may see it as a more viable project as a three-family and and put the money that it takes to invest into that property to get it up to code, to make it a nicer project that will, you know, make money for them, will not be a drag on it. But if if you're the kind of property owner that, you know, you look at it and you say, I could put a lien in here, I'm not going to tell anybody about it, I'm going to cram it full of people, it leads to other problems. And so our code is written in such a way right now that it it somewhat incentivizes people to come in and just sort of roll the dice, put it in illegal units rather than following the rules, because there's no real clear path forward for them to do that. So the zoning code changes, which are being considered right now, but are not, you know, necessarily going to get passed, right? Are looking at just making that change for the T-zone to allow people to easily, you know, to easily come in and just do this, our, I apologize, there's no train of thought here. To come in and turn it into a two-family district. The changes are to sort of make it possible for you have a old, you know, non-conforming use or not non-conforming use, but a a non-conforming lot become conforming, right? So there are some changes being considered, and it is a slight density increase, but it's not from a practical standpoint going to lead to a huge amount of density. But more analysis needs to be done, right? It still needs to be reviewed. So I apologize for the meandering answer here, but.
Yeah, no, no, I understand. I I think it's an area that needs kind of careful consideration. You know, I think when you look at, you know, what's different about Austining, places, you know, in Westchester, like Austin, I'd say Austin and Portchester, is, you know, for the last ten years, we've had the largest enrollment growths, you know, in the in the county, but also in the state as well. And those are communities are both high-density, less single-family houses where the enrollment declines have happened, right? So it's a little bit counterintuitive when you say the single-family homes bring in more students when places like Austin and Portchester actually see the opposite with higher density, right? And I and I think there's, there could be a lot of reasons for that locally as to why that happens, you know? People living in smaller quarters, you know, at the end of the day. And so I just think part of the concerns around especially like T-zones and other residential zones is where the plan is looking to make them more dense. It just, I think we need to quantify what the impact of students would be in a meaningful way for the board and for the community. I think there'll be some healthy skepticism that that wouldn't result in more students. So I think that's just really important. And the last thing, I guess, is just with the enrollment projections that you have, and I took a look, you know, with ours and and what yours are. I I guess, is there a report that we can get off of, that we can get from that to compare with our demographers run? I think, you know, there may be some assumptions in there, you know, or I guess actually on page twenty, in the online report, in the enrollment decline section. What do you have as, have you considered the projects on the books in those numbers? You know, or what, you know, what what new development are in those enrollments, if any, at the end of the day? And do you have a report that gives us some of those numbers? Because they, on the surface, they just look a little more significant than what I would expect for an enrollment decline.
I did actually do my forecast and did take into account the the numbers on the books. But in the end, for the present, for presentation purposes, we decided just to go with the district's enrollment forecast. And I don't recall off the top of my head if a new development was incorporated into those. I mean, they were finished in November of 2019, so I believe so. I mean, that would be best practices, and I'm I'm sure the the district would have requested that such be done. So the assumption was it was being taken into account, but we did not embellish the existing forecast for the report.
My anecdotal feedback is it looks a little bit more of a steep decline than I think we did expect. But I think if, you know, whatever you can share with us so we can look at against our demographic support, that would be great.
Tina, can I just ask a question there? I I think that you had taken, could you expound a little bit on the district's report is Western Suffolk Boese's report? You use that, you utilize that, but you route, is my understanding. Is that, is that correct?
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand the last, I lost you.
Sorry, you, I think you utilized, let me ask the question of you. I think you, did you utilize the Western Suffolk Boese Democratic Report for the school district?
Yes, yes, I did. I did my own, but in the end, we decided to use the Boese's report, yeah.
Yeah.
So can I? Can I just clarify and add details to Frank's question and just, our demographer does not, when you look at the numbers, it does not take into account development that's on the books. She'll tell us that those developments are being proposed and the potential yield associated with it, but they're not counted in when you see the line going down. We, it's probably not as low as one would project because she she's waiting for them to finally get approved by the by the planning board, and then they finally, for lack of a better, they hit our numbers. So I think that's in response to Frank's question that, you know, we have, we have this page that we've more recently started to ask, like, give us a sense of what these developments are. So we may have a hundred students that aren't necessarily accounted for, or maybe two hundred students that may be accounted for that aren't necessarily reflected in that decline or the study or the increase. So that's just a little caveat to the report that I think we all need to kind of keep in mind as we're thinking about developments and looking at the report itself or any other reports.
Yeah, I mean, so whatever you can share with us on that would be great for that analysis. The last thing I think that's, you know, I wouldn't necessarily expect you to have in your report, but I think it's important to the conversation, and it really ties into the enrollment increase we've had over the last decade, is the utilization of our schools, comparatively speaking, across, you know, the county. I think what you'll find is is that our schools are, our our school space is much more heavily utilized, and that has programmatic impacts. So while, you know, the report talks about a declining enrollment, you know, you know, alleviating the strain, I think there's a different viewpoint that basically that would get us breathing room back that we don't have today and would allow us to do some things that we're not able to do today and that maybe aren't even consistent with educational practices, you know, best practices of what you want to do. So I would just caution as from an impact statement to basically project that, well, you have a declining enrollment, and I think we would have to, we want to bet what that decline would be. But there's also the fact that the path, that our schools are much more packed than other schools at the end of the day, and that has an impact on what you're able to do. So I think that's an important piece to get into the plan as well. I think that's something we could probably help you kind of put together as part of an impact statement.
So I I think that I have a question real fast that I kind of want to turn around to the board, the board here in relation to that. You know, we we do seem to be talking a lot about, you know, adding school students to, you know, declining enrollment or school students to an existing school district. But there has been no discussion as of yet about, despite the fact you kind of mentioned that there is not enough room for the students, or there's a very tight density of students within the space that is existing. There's been no discussion about whether or not the school district wants to increase, you know, the capacity by building more space. And it would be helpful, I think, for us to know whether or not the school district has any plans to increase the space that is available. Are you looking to build any new buildings or lease any new buildings? How would that affect your costs over time if you had to accommodate new students? I mean, that, I think, is an additional piece that would be worth knowing if the school district has not, has it yet made any plans to increase any space. Is is this maybe the time to start thinking about that, or is that not even a consideration?
I mean, I'll answer just in brief, but I think the board would probably respond to that, is if you look through our minutes and notes over the past several years, we've we've done a lot of incremental things that have added space. I think the challenge that we have is, is, you know, trying to accommodate this massive surge over the past decade and, you know, and trying to basically do things in bits and pieces. You know, we we had put a bond up in 2012. We initially had a bond that was larger that went down, so there was, there was at that time a need for more space for, you know, for the students we projected. So I think this is an important piece that needs to get into this plan. This is an important piece that needs to get into this plan. I don't know that we need to get into all the details now, but I think the important part is For you to recognize, we have tight buildings and we've done a lot of incremental things, but When projects and density increases in part of a comprehensive plan, that's going to also require Perhaps more space likely than what we would have expected, you know, so Just, just parts, I think, you know, I think this is a good start. I think we need to mature it a bit more.
I would just add on that one, I think I'd add up the total, don't, I hate to say this, this crew because it's so powerful, but, um, I think I added up, we've added like 38 classrooms over the last decade To address, you know, the thousand plus kids. And if you look, Frank said it's incremental, but it's, you know, we I think we've budgeted and allotted six more Between Brookside and Claremont that are, are coming. Um, but that's really just to get More comfortable with the students we already have. That's not, um, that's what Frank Is saying. And I think, you know, the comment about our, we do use that, it is our enrollment plan, but if you look at our Meetings, um, I think we really like our demographer, but we also Really question and challenge that report every year it comes as to what, you know, Does, do the assumptions really reflect what's actually going on, um, In Austin and not just based on generic birth rates and, um, trends, so, um, I guess it's a way to say it is our report and we use it and it's the best we've got, but it doesn't necessarily mean we're a hundred percent on On board with it. Um, And, and I think we've talked the last couple of meetings, this fall, we're intending to come out with a Another round of our capital project plan for the next couple of years, which will, um, I'm sure include Additional space, um, So we're actively working on that conversation. Um, And again, that's To address the needs of, of the students we currently have, um, You know, if it goes down, that gives us more capacity, but I think at the end of the day, I think I'm coming away Thinking, it, it sounds like you're a little overly optimistic on that decline in enrollment. Um, And I don't want to come across as Catherine said, as anti-development. I think there's a There's a need and, uh, you know, we need to figure it out. Um, But, you know, the schools, as Frank said, were very tight. Frank's compared our schools to other schools around the county and Our, our students per square foot is, if not the lowest, it's very low. Um, so No, we're stretched. That's not to say we can't have any more students and We don't have complete control over that. Um, but I just personally want you to come across as Feeling like we're, you know, we're stretched.
It would be great if we could see those capacity numbers. Like the number of classrooms per school and students per classroom, that would be really, really helpful.
Not, say one more time, number of students per school?
Then, yeah, the number of classrooms per school.
Classrooms per school.
And students per classroom. To get at that capacity issue, that would be really helpful.
I just want to add that that's not necessarily the only component. It's also an analysis of Common space and how much space is actually within the classroom because we have several Many classrooms that have been divided in half when it should historically be one classroom and now it is two To accommodate the limitations of the building spaces. So I'm just cautioning you that those two values aren't going to give you the entire Picture, but we do have the, the Per square foot analysis for students. So maybe that can be provided as well.
That would be really helpful. Thank you.
I would just say and piggy to connect with that, that there, there's probably some merit in this. You know, an appropriate similar presentation to, to you in terms of what is really being dealt with because I think to some extent, and just piggybacking on what Ms. Crossling just said is, uh, You know, we oftentimes we look at it through the lens of regularite classrooms, um, And we have, you know, reading teachers, special education, and you go on and on and on. And there, even our music program in the elementaries or other art spaces that are, um, You know, sometimes compromised, uh, because of the lack of space. So, uh, My point being is that there might be some merit in just really walking you through, giving The same thing, there's a story behind the numbers that sometimes gets lost in a, in a document. That's all.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that, you know, one of the key components for the Comprehensive plan is coming up with an economic development strategy That will, you know, on one end help alleviate the, the, the pressure on the taxpayer, right? The high tax rate is really kind of a big issue. And so making sure that the comprehensive plan, you know, elucidates a, a, a policy that will Um, create, you know, net revenue for village, for the school district is really important. Um, so obviously increasing school, um, students is a piece of that. Um, and I think it is, you know, it's going to be helpful to get those reports from me because it's important to know What the capacity is for the school district, but I, I think it's also important to understand that, you know, if we need to, you know, put something into the conflict That talks about increasing space in the school district, understanding what those costs are. Uh, that, that economic development strategy that we have lines up with that. And so, um, You know, there, I think there's no economic development strategy that we could come up with right now that would, you know, Lower the students, uh, lo, you know, increase, you know, revenue, bring down taxes and do everything else. We can't just Certainly, you know, recommend a strategy that does nothing. Um, so we do have to have some sort of strategy behind it and it would be helpful to know those numbers Because that certainly, um, you know, could, could go a long way to making sure that the strategy that we are talking about makes sense.
You know, I mean, thank you for saying that. Um, I, I think that's an incredibly important point because, um, This isn't necessarily an either or conversation, or, or it shouldn't be an either or conversation. It really is Uh, again, an essential conversation to figure out, um, Uh, in large part, the economic development strategy that will work for us for, um, The school district and the community and, and for the families and children that live in this community. So One of the other things that, that we are looking at, and, and we have a unique opportunity is we're looking at a comprehensive Plan through the lens of unprecedented, uh, Occurrence, uh, with the pandemic and how much that's changed, uh, to a degree, the way we live. Um, whether that's short-term changes or long-term implications, but also It's brought to light a lot of issues that affect children in the community That impact the school district, that impact, uh, the community, uh, more broadly. And really speak to the, the social, emotional health and wellbeing and, and physical fitness of those, uh, Children. And that's where we have an opportunity also to, there, there's an, oh, a real overlap. So I, I think we Could acknowledge that the more information we share, the more we look to the needs of the district, the more we can address those needs By things that bring, um, revenue and opportunity to the community.
Yeah, thank you, um, for that because I think, um, you know, uh, historically, these kind of conversations are always understandably geared towards Um, specifically housing impacts. Um, but I think it is Um, crucial to look at it through the lens of, um, The pandemic and the things we've learned from that. I mean, there's other, um, benefits to our input to the collective Comprehensive plan. For instance, you know, One thing the pandemic highlighted was our need for, um, Multi-use, uh, spaces, outdoor spaces, spaces that might be without, um, out of, outside of the walls Of the schools that can be utilized, um, in instances that we find ourselves like now. So I think There's a very broad perspective of input that we can be giving to the overall comprehensive plan That, um, doesn't only have to be honing in on, um, the housing impacts because there's other needs that, um, The collective students, uh, you know, might need that can be, uh, Voiced in this plan going forward. And from a school's perspective, we have a very unique perspective of what some of those other needs Might be. So just a little primer for our conversations as a board going forward to kind of look at it a bit more, um, Expansively in terms of how we can help, um, drive the overall development of the community to help the students Within our district, um, I think would be very good too.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, does anybody else have any questions or comments before we go to the audience?
Can I, can I bring up, and maybe this is or, or isn't the right space? Um, and I think just building on what Melissa said, I, I know there's been a lot of Conversations and the, the points been made in terms of impact on On enrollment space and other things like that. Uh, and obviously the impact it could have on the tax base and bringing new Development in, um, is this a space to think, you know, as you, as you think broader about Alternative, uh, opportunities for our kids and, and youth, uh, i.e. Um, you know, number one, you know, connectivity, um, And built into the plan, uh, that's a huge, you know, I think to Melissa's point, the Um, the, the lack thereof, um, has been brought not just in Austin, but, you know, and a variety of other spaces and looking at ways in which we can Seek to address that in the context of this plan. The other part of it too is I, You know, I, I've, I've shared in various other settings, I do, I, I do think our youth, and I know there's work within the village to do this, but I Um, and, and district, I, I think our youth need more activities and more places and spaces to To engage and be part of. I, I think there's a lack thereof of You know, concrete opportunities and spaces for our kids to go to outside of just maybe three buildings, i.e. the rec center sometimes. The library sometimes in the school district, you know, um, maybe more so during the During the school year than a little less or so during the summer. So I Just putting that, I'm not sure if this is a space, but if any of those variables can be considered as we look towards this. I think our, you know, our middle school age to, you know, upper elementary could really benefit from, and actually I don't want to dismiss our high school kids. Um, need opportunities beyond just what the school is offering within, and have addicts actually publicly said that in various other Projects that have taken place historically. I think we've had kids study through NYU and did some summer projects and All of them kept yielding the same thing that they want to see in our community.
This is that, this is exactly the place to do that.
Oh, then let me keep going then. Uh, No, I, I think, no, I'm only kidding. I mean, I, I, I think to the extent that it can be incorporated in there, I, you know, I Been on record, I've seen, you know, Newberg Armory, I've seen other spaces where kids are coming in and out on Saturday, hundreds and hundreds of kids. I don't see that here in Austin, outside of some, you know, formalized youth programs. And I think we, I think we need that. Uh, I think, you know, we're, we're, we're faced and stretched as a community as relates to gymnasium space. Um, athletics, you know, we don't have enough even for our own sports, plus You know, what the rec department and, uh, youth programs are trying to offer. Um, you know, I'll even put out their tennis courts are a limit, limited for some of our students, um, albeit I know we use You know, we share some of them, but they, you know, there's probably not enough, even enough of those. So I think we should, you know, it'd be interesting to, for us to really study and Understand further and incorporate some of these, these things into Our future planning for our village, but in connection with our schools and supportive of our youth.
Thank you, Dr. Sanchez. Uh, and, and I'll, I'll just share real briefly, um, as we're moving To, I believe we just have one audience, uh, question. Uh, you know, it, and why I asked for more slides is I, I thought we were also going to talk about some of the, you know, the recreation space and some of the parks and And those types of things that would impact our students, um, and community members a little bit, but, um, We'll, you know, continue to look at that. And I really appreciate all of my colleagues', um, Input and everybody's responses from the consultants to, um, to our village manager. So if it's okay right now, I'm going to bring in, um, we just have one question and I will bring in that person right now. Okay. And, uh, Ms. Vecchirelli, if you could unmute your mic and share your screen and, you know, show your name and Your address and go ahead with your comment or question.
Thank you. Hi, this is Jess Vecchirelli. I live at Locust Road in Briar Cliff Manor. And I just want to thank everyone who has, uh, participated in this conversation. Um, I've been on since the beginning. It's, it's quite amazing to Hear all of the different, um, points of view. I agree with a lot of what's been, um, Addressed already by the school board. Um, and I, I just think it's wonderful to see The, to have the community able, although it's obviously at an inopportune time To watch the conversation happen between the school board and, um, the village. So I Like others, I am in complete support of the right type of development for our community. I know that, um, You know, this pandemic has shone a light on a lot of issues that are facing our youth. Um, right now, my children are, you know, we, we are at capacity in Austin and And my children are attending school one or two days a week. And in other communities like Bronxville or Scarsdale, children are attending school five days a week. So It's wonderful to hear that there's a potential for, um, Uh, our enrollment numbers to be a little bit lower in the future, but we're still very much living The, the at capacity right now. So it's, it's nice to hear. I'm a little, I'm, I'm like Mr. Galif, um, where I'm a little comprehend, or apprehensive of, um, Believing the, the drop that is coming, but I welcome it. Um, I think it's wonderful to hear The different opportunities of use for this space. You know, I know that our community, Um, I, I go to Terrytown a lot with my children, especially now, um, just to utilize that beautiful waterfront. I really wish I was, I was spending more time in Austin. At the Austin waterfront. I think there's potential for a community center that could serve both the town and the village, the youth of the town and the village In, in a lot of the spaces that are here. So it's nice to hear that it's added. Um, you know, one of my concerns, uh, one of the things that I heard Mr. Fish say was that it was a plus referring to the Briar Cliff. Um, Development that was not going to, it was a 55 and older and wasn't going to necessarily yield, um, Students, but you know, one thing that people that don't live in Austin, that are working on this project should be aware of Is that Yorktown and Newcastle and Briar Cliff and Austin feed into our schools. So it, it seems like The board is constantly trying to, to know of new developments that are going to impact our students. Um, I think it would be wonderful to have an amphitheater or, or just creating more space, you know? It's also been mentioned how much Is our community relies on our schools. While as a scout leader, my husband's a scout leader, I'm a scout leader, we can't utilize the schools in the ways that we have in the past To have meetings for, uh, for the scouts because Meetings aren't taking places in schools and schools need to be really cautious. So to have Multi-use spaces available in our community for our community to enjoy, um, with youth and just as, as families, I think is, is really a plus. But I do, it was addressed, um, briefly, and I just want to have a broader understanding. And if This isn't the appropriate venue for that, I can attend a village meeting and ask the question. Um, but There's a lot of unsafe housing in Austin and it's a great concern for the people that live in those spaces As well as the first responders who need to deal with emergencies that take place at all times. Is the comprehensive plan, I, I heard that there were references of code, but is the comprehensive plan also addressing that element of our community? And, um, my understanding also was that a few years ago, when I met with, um, Mayor Garrity, She had mentioned that new code was being put into the books that would then be able to be enforced. Um, and there was a plan in action. I'm just curious if somebody could provide me with, uh, information on that.
Sure. Um, thank you so much for that question. Um, that's a really, really great question and important one. So We have made a lot of strides on code enforcement. Um, We have gone from not doing proactive fire inspections for nearly, I don't know, decades To doing those regularly and our, our director, our, our, our head building inspector and our code enforcement team Are making a lot of ground on proactive inspections, um, and fire inspections. And we have Been successful at some of the most egregious code violations. However, Code enforcement is a relatively, um, it's a very, very important piece, but it is not the entire solution To the issues that we see in Austin of substandard housing, bad conditions. Um, this is something that has to be tackled in, in a real multifaceted way. So the comprehensive plan is absolutely looking to do that. And One of the things that it's seeking to do is, is to really identify that balance. And that's why this conversation is so incredibly important. Of the need for affordable housing, quality affordable housing, the need for that housing to address families. So while studios and one bedrooms actually are needed and are So while studios and one bedrooms actually are needed and are great and work well for an aging population, which does need a certain level of speed, you know, ability, downsides and affordability, we have a lot of families and, and, um, who need housing and, and the substandard housing, uh, oftentimes is, is the last resort. Um, it's often not particularly affordable. Um, and again, some of the zoning changes that we're looking at are really done so that, um, we are able to improve that housing, housing stock by creating a market force that will, will facilitate that. Um, that doesn't exist everywhere. Um, so, you know, some of the challenges with code enforcement, um, you know, code enforcement is, is a process that often has to go through the courts. Um, it is not unusual for, um, people who own multiple substandard properties to make a lot of money and it's cheaper for them to keep things going in the courts than it is to actually fix their buildings. So, um, it's not, again, code enforcement is important. We're making great strides there, but it really, you have to create a bunch of forces that force bad landlords out of the market. If we're going to do this, and this is like really an important issue in Austin, because if we're going to do that in a way that benefits the community, that benefits the school district, that benefits economic development, we are talking about a very socio-economically diverse community that for the most part, that is one of the things people talk about is one of the best things about Austin, and it's certainly the way the village feels about Austin. So, um, I think the comprehensive plan in this discussion is incredibly important to really, uh, be able to not only just do code enforcement, which is one unfortunately somewhat limited way to deal with substandard housing, but to really create an environment where substandard housing has very little opportunity to thrive. Um, and in doing so, that's the affordable housing question too. If we're going to do that and preserve a level of affordability, we have to make space for that too. And again, why this, this conversation is so incredibly important, um, we know the implications of that um, in terms of families and number of children and impact on the school district. But, um, I would say that, that is one of the critical pillars of why we're doing this on the housing front. I don't know if.
Thank you.
I may or, or trustee Lopez would like to add anything to that.
Um, I defer to trustee Lopez if he wanted to jump in. There was one comment I wanted to make about the, the first question as well, but I'll wait.
Please, I, uh, a- after you. I think, uh, Karen said a lot, uh, so please.
Um, the, the, the thing that you mentioned earlier about being a scout leader, my daughter's actually a girl scout and we have to go to meetings all the way in. And I think it's Scarsdale and to the scout house, whatever. So I, I, I understand the challenges that are there. Um, I, I think that is something that we can put into the comprehensive plan and talking about, um, as new developments come up, um, for proposals promoting, uh, the availability of publicly available community space that can be provided in some of that housing. I think that's something that is, is very, you know, that's a thoughtful question and something that's useful. Um, the, the lack of, um, I think public opportunities, um, for people to go play, uh, has been mentioned at a lot of meetings. So the, you know, one of the emphasis of the complaint is to try to provide more, um, public space, more, you know, places for, um, for kids to go, for people to hang out. Um, and that's been a, a certainly a driving force in us developing this plan. Uh, but I think your, your point about, you know, creating actual public, um, you know, community space uh, is something that I think is, is really useful and is something that probably can be implemented in the plan as we look at some of the, you know, zoning incentives um, for the form-based code to, to talk about, maybe putting something in there that would provide for some, uh, creation of, you know, if there's any larger developments providing for some provision of, uh, public space to be available. And that, that's something that, that has existed in other municipalities. Um, it's not something to talk about much here, but I think it is something that we could theoretically, uh, integrate. So thank you for that comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vecchirelli. Uh, so, um, if there aren't any more questions, um, I want to thank, uh, looks like we don't have any more audience questions. Um, I want to thank, uh, the village trustees, the village manager and everyone on this call who presented, uh, to us. And, you know, keeping in mind what, um, we discussed, and I know we're going to do some follow-up and we really appreciate this, um, opportunity to, uh, ask questions and comment. So, uh, I will have to take a formal, uh, motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you, everybody. Have a nice day.
Everybody.
Yeah.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Thank you.